Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Bowersox?
Here.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
It's come to my attention that Heather Stevenson can't be here tonight. She's homesick and called in and is excused from our meeting. Does anyone have additions to the agenda? Is there any report from staff?
I have one.
Yes, Mayor?
I'd like to read a proclamation about Fire Safety Week. Whereas the city of Urbana is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas the nonprofit National Fire Protection Association has documented through its research a significant increase in home candle fires even as most other causes of home fires have steadily declined, and whereas Urbana's firefighters are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas Urbana's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, and whereas using proper care with candles will have a positive effect on the home fire problem, and whereas each candle fire that is prevented in Urbana is an opportunity to prevent painful injury and costly property damage, and whereas the 2005 Fire Prevention Week theme "Use Candles With Care When You Go Out Blow-Out" effectively serves to remind us all of the simple actions we can take to stay safer from fire during Fire Prevention Week and year-round. Now therefore I, Laurel Munt Pressing, Mayor of the city of Urbana, do hereby proclaim the week of October 9th through 15th, 2005, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city, and I urge all the people of Urbana to heed the important safety messages of Fire Prevention Week 2005 and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Urbana's fire rescue services. And I'd like to give this proclamation to Chief Rex Munt, and he has a few words to say about Fire Prevention Week.
Thank you, good evening. I just want to take a moment and first appreciate the mayor and the council's support of our Prevention Week. It is a very important activity for us. It is something we do have concerns about, that we only really appear to be looking at this as one week out of the year. We strive in our organization to carry out our fire prevention activities throughout the year in the community and in the schools. The goal this year, as the mayor mentioned, is candle safety. Just for the record, in our fire records, we have confirmed working fires in every room of a residential home, and when you spread out over the city. It isn't just something in a family room or a den, it is in every room we've had working fires over the years. It is something that is forgotten. I have been guilty myself of turning around, heading back home to make sure I blow out a candle. It is something that does start house fires. And so we'd like to remind the community to be aware of it, to educate our children to the safety concerns and not to just forget these issues, and also join us this week at Lincoln Square Mall. We have activities all week long during the day for children in skits and activities, and then on Thursday evening from 6:00 to 8:00, it's our annual Family Night. And again, we have our very famous skit with our special singing firefighter stop, drop, and roll program. It's a wonderful event. They just really, he pulls the children in like you would not believe. We have sponsors of Papa John's and Coke who are providing pizza and Coke for all the attendees. It's a fun evening, so we'd like to encourage everyone to join us Thursday evening for the festivities and a little educational moment on fire safety, and again, just be prepared for fire safety throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, Mayor. Any other public input this evening, or input from the council this evening? Yes, Charlie?
Yeah. The caucus just approved a couple of sets of minutes, and in those minutes, if you look closely, we had extensive discussion on economic development, and where we sort of as a caucus agreed we would be going. I'm wondering if the mayor and Bruce have come up with a plan to address that particular goal in the council goals? And when we might be coming, and when you might be coming to us with a proposal?
We're going to do an advertisement for an Economic Development Director, and we're meeting next week to do that.
Okay, so you've decided on how it's going to be configured, then?
Not completely, but we're getting closer.
Okay, so will we hear about it next council meeting?
I think so. I mean, as soon as we have our meeting on the job description and what the ad's going to look like, we'll bring it to the council.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other input from council members? Okay, on to approval of minutes of the previous meeting. A motion would be in order.
So moved.
A second.
Okay, a motion by Charlie, and a second by Dennis. Those are, that's for approval of the September 26 minutes. Are there any corrections or questions? Dennis?
Yes, there was one correction on page two. I think it was the sixth paragraph, and I don't have nine minutes at hand. I indicated, it was, it reads that Mr. Bowersox reported that the police department's first Thursday community meeting will be held, and the date, and I was actually, I did that. I was the one who announced that for the committee. It's a small, but meaningful correction.
Any other corrections this evening? Okay, hearing none. Would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Okay, those minutes are approved. Next, we have public input. If any members of the public would like to speak tonight, you can fill out one of the cards that's on the back table at the back of the room with your name, and bring it up to the clerk at the left, and you can have five minutes to speak on any topic. I haven't received any cards. This is your last chance, any members of the public who would like to speak? Okay, hearing none, we'll proceed. Next, we have a presentation on the MetCad radio project by MetCad and the fire and police departments.
Great. Just by way of introduction, Rick Colmar and Greg Abbott are both here for the council. Is not totally familiar with MetCad. It's an agency that we belong to, as well as maybe 22, 25 other agencies within the county. A little bit of history, in the late 70s, we decided we could radio dispatch better jointly than each independent, fire department, police department doing its own dispatch, so we formed a governmental approach to dispatch in the late 70s. And the purpose tonight is to discuss primarily the replacement of the radio system that's in place. It's quite old. And with that, I'll turn over to Colmar, the director of MetCad.
Thank you very much for a chance to talk with you all about the radio project. As Bruce mentioned, we want to start this with just a brief recap of MetCad history, especially that relating to the radio system that we use. Sure, there is a PowerPoint that we're using in the back, and I won't be offended at all if I look at the back of your head while we go through this.
Thank you.
So you can follow along. There will be more information on the screen than what I'm discussing, so you might want to take a look at that. Let's go. Previous to MetCad, and this would be prior to 1979, each of the public safety jurisdictions and departments operated their own independent radio networks. For police, this, in the metro area, this was Urbana Police, Champaign Police, and the University of Illinois Police. And although they operated in an area, many areas with overlapping jurisdiction, each agency used their own standalone radio system. The way these worked is illustrated on this next slide. You have a police station where most of the transmitters were located. Each agency would maintain its own radio equipment at the base station, which would be able to transmit messages to the cars in the field or the officers on foot. The field units can respond back to the police station. They can also talk to each other in the field. However, all of these communications are only within that one department. So there was no, what we call today, interoperability between the police departments who were operating in the same area. So in the late 70s, the suggestion came forth that, you know, gee, this would work a lot better if the police departments could actually listen to each other's traffic and talk to each other, and possibly even corespond to important calls. And that, plus the desire of the three principal jurisdictions to look for a way to consolidate the dispatching function in a single place, led to the development of MetCad. So this diagram shows MetCad's radio environment as it was initially envisioned. Again, we have the three existing radio networks, one for each agency. However, in this case now, MetCad becomes the central dispatching organization which uses those radio networks to talk to the three different police departments. And by 1980, we had, through some grant assistance, bought enough equipment to move all three agencies to a UHF network that allowed all three agencies to talk to each other as well as to MetCad. So we had achieved a degree of interoperability with radio systems between the three police departments in the Champaign-Urbana area. And the acronym MetCad, by the way, stands for Metropolitan Computer-Aided Dispatch, so the metropolitan area was what started MetCad. The other big feature of the day was the technology involved in the computer-aided dispatch function, in which the dispatchers relied on a computer system to help them keep track of the units and the calls. You'll notice on this diagram, there's a little red fire truck and a little green ambulance on there, and we illustrate that just to show that there was no interoperability between fire, EMS, or police back at the original days of MetCad. They operated independently at that time. The system that you just saw diagrammed that was in place in 1980 is substantially the same system that we're using today, including the original infrastructure equipment, some of which predated the late 70s by a significant period of time. There were some limitations at the time, and there are still today some limitations of the legacy radio system. For one thing, the infrastructure life expectancy, which was seven to 10 years when it was built, has been exceeded considerably. Today, there's a limited availability of parts to use to repair the radio system. The original system also has some coverage limitations in terms of where the signals can be used or heard, and those relate back to the original architecture, which had systems that were designed to cover only individual jurisdictions. They were kind of knitted together, but the result was that not all the radio frequencies can be used everywhere in the county. So it really limits how we use the radio system even today. And again, the spectrum limitations, there's very little additional licensing available on frequencies in the UHF and VHF bands where the old system operates today. So we can't really expand the system as it currently exists. And lastly, the communications load on the system is more than double what the design capacity of the radio network was. The number of police and fire units, as well as the number of calls for service that we're handling with the radio system is more than double what it was when it was designed. This limited interoperability refers to the fact that while we did establish interoperability between the police departments, we are still quite limited. We don't today have direct interoperability between the police and the fire on the same radio system, and the same is true of the ambulance systems, so. Okay, in 1996, the MetCad Policy Board identified several capital improvement programs for MetCad. The highlights of those were three major projects. The first was a facility renovation and expansion of the actual dispatch facility. Second was the improvement and replacement of the communications consoles that the operators use, and the last was the replacement of the radio system. In 1997, the following year, a referendum effort was made, and the voters approved an increase in the wireline telephone surcharge that people pay in Champaign County that comes to MetCad to help fund not only the capital improvement projects, but also the operational costs for MetCad. The radio project itself began in earnest in 2002 with the creation of a committee called EMRAC, the MetCad Radio Advisory Committee. The composition of that committee included representatives of all of the jurisdictions, all of the police departments, fire departments, the EMS companies, as well as MetCad and the policy board. And they had a big job ahead of them to try to take a look at the radio needs for the public safety community and make a recommendation about what should be used to replace the old system. This broke down into a set of project goals. The police side of the House recommended that they needed to have additional channels or talk groups in modern radio speak. They needed to have equal access to all frequencies across the county, again, remembering that the legacy system is very isolated in terms of where the signals are shown. They also wanted to enhance coverage to allow better portable radio operation, especially inside of large structures, campus, the hospitals, and other large buildings in the community. They wanted the ability to identify individual radios as they transmit it for enhanced officer safety. The fire project team came up with some similar goals, again, dedicated dispatch channel to eliminate paging on the operational radio channels. If you listen to the scanners today, you'll note on occasion, when there are people out working on a fire scene, the same radio channel is used to broadcast another call to perhaps another fire department. It's very disruptive, so they wanted to eliminate that. They also wanted the ability to identify individual radios, again, for firefighter safety. They wanted the ability for their incident command officers to be able to communicate directly with MetCad from portable radios from the fire scenes, and they wanted additional channels for fire ground operations. MABUS came along recently. This is the mutual aid box alarm system that the fire service uses in Illinois for mutual aid beyond the communities, and that system operates a set of radio frequencies that the fire service is needed to have access to as well. This boiled down by the EMRAC committee into three conceptual alternatives for replacements for the radio system. The first concept was to create a new conventional UHF and VHF radio system with additional frequencies to meet some of the project goals. The second concept was to participate in the emerging StarCom 21 statewide digital trunk radio network on the police side of the House, and to build a conventional VHF system for fire. And the third alternative was to build our own digital trunked network for police and a conventional VHF system for the fire service. If you take a look at this somewhat complicated chart, and I apologize for that, it takes a bit of glaring to see all of this. What you see here is a matrix that was used rather late in the process of refining and comparing the conceptual alternatives with the goals of the project. And there are two concepts that are included on this chart. I just want to point out, the third concept is the StarCom 21 statewide network. You don't see it there because by this point in the process, the MetCad Policy Board had decided that that was not a suitable alternative for Champaign County due to its projected cost, which was estimated to be higher than building our own system, and also the lack of local administrative control of the network. So this compares the conventional VHF, UHF radio system on the bottom line with the digital trunked and VHF solution on the next to the bottom line. And the result is that the clear conceptual choice was to go with the digital trunked system for police and a VHF system for fire. I want to talk just for a minute about the digital trunking system solution for police. There are some advantages to this that led to its choice. It's a much more efficient user of the limited number of radio frequencies that the system will operate on. Trunking systems are, have been around for a long time. The telephone networks have used trunking as a way to maximize the efficiency of their systems for decades now. The basic idea is that you have a given number of frequencies to which users can be assigned to operate for a given message, and then when they're done talking, those frequencies are available again for another user to use, quite independent of what department's talking or any of that sort of thing. So it ends up allowing you to use a given number of frequencies to handle a lot more messages without any complications. There's also an advantage in terms of the consistent performance across the county for all departments. The system can be expanded at minimal cost to support more users as needed. The system is software-based, so future upgrades and enhancements to the system are much less costly to make than to conventional radio systems. And lastly, trunking gives extensive operational flexibility in the way we combine user groups to talk to each other and assign the use of the available frequencies. This next slide is an actual computer model that displays the signal strength of one of the police radio frequencies that we currently use. This one happens to be the one that we use for Champaign Police. It is, however, illustrative of the police frequency coverage for the Metropolitan Police Department. The orange area represents the area in which a police officer out on the street with a portable radio can transmit and be heard by the other users on the system, and the green area represents the area in which that same officer can actually receive radio traffic from the system. And you'll notice, of course, for the metro areas, it's concentrated in the Champaign-Urbana metro area, and it doesn't exist out in the corners of the county, which is one of the reasons why we have to use the frequencies the way we do today. The sheriff's department can't use this channel because they can't hear it out in the county. Just to compare this with the digital trunking system that we propose to use to replace the police system, this is the same computer-generated model for the 800 megahertz trunk system. It shows, if you can look very closely, that it's a five-site system. We actually have five transmission and receiving sites around the county. Three of them are in the metro area of Champaign-Urbana. There's one in the north around Rantoul, and one south between Sidney and Philo. All five of those sites broadcast and receive simultaneously on all frequencies, which allows all of the users of the system to have the same signal strength and coverage wherever they are in the county. And as you can see, it's much more extensive coverage than the current system. All right, so where are we? Today, the project status is that on August of this year, the policy board directed the MetCad staff to proceed to develop final engineering on the solutions, and also to develop a contract purchase, the new radio system. The equipment will be purchased through the State of Illinois Joint Purchasing Program through their contract vendor. Cost estimate for the system is four to five million dollars at this point, and that money is on hand at this time. The money was raised over the years through the phone surcharge that was levied in Champaign County and set aside for this project. The board is aware that they have that much to spend, so that's our goal. The goal is to have this contract completed by the end of 2005, which would make the system available for use by the police agencies in mid-2007. Budget impact for the city of Urbana. The first impact and most significant one is that the police department for Urbana would need to have new user equipment, new portable radios, in order to utilize the new system. They'll also, you'll need to have new radios for any other city departments that eventually want to migrate to use the system. And I would point out, one of the advantages of the digital trunking system is it has a very large capacity to support user groups and departments beyond even the public safety agencies, and this is one of the factors that went into choosing that type of architecture. It can be expanded to cover public works, fire department users, any number of public service units for the governments that are partners in MetCad, so. But all of those users, before they could migrate to use the system, would have to have radio equipment that would work with the system, and no one in the area is using that kind of equipment today, so it would all have to be purchased. There is a potential for an increase in the user agency fees paid by the various jurisdictions in the future, and this ties in with the overall MetCad funding picture that we project over the next five to 10 years. So let's talk about MetCad funding real briefly before I end. Currently, user agency fees are used to make up the difference between the operational expenses at MetCad and the revenue generated by the telephone surcharges. That means that if the surcharge revenue declines or the operational expenses increase, the user agency fees have to be raised in order to cover the expenses of operating MetCad. The policy board is aware of the fact that we are likely to have increased costs in the future. We can carry on for another couple of budget years without exceeding our current revenues, but after a couple of years, our costs will exceed our current revenue structure, so they're aware of that there's a need to investigate alternative funding strategies in the future. And the other impact that I would mention to you all at this point is just an early heads-up, that if there is an alternative funding strategy that is identified, the policy board will be coming back to visit with you all about getting political support for whatever changes might be required for that. All right, well, thank you very much for your attention, and if you have questions, Greg or I'd be happy to answer questions at this time.
Yeah, thank you, Rick. Any questions from the committee? Mayor?
On your map that showed the orange, you know, sort of the boundaries being right at the county line, and also it seemed like there's some little gaps. So, I mean, do you literally stop it at the county line?
Not exactly. However, the licensing requirements for the radio frequencies, for public safety frequencies, the Federal Communications Commission requires that our signals not extend more than a certain distance from the jurisdictional boundary. So the radio antennas have to be aimed in such a way so that there is a fairly rapid drop-off in that signal coverage once you go beyond the county borders. The areas that look like gaps on the map are the river valleys, and radio signal propagation is pretty much by line of sight, so where you have a big hole in the ground or a river valley that deeply digs down below the surface of the surrounding prairie, at the very bottom of those gulches, it's very difficult to get radio signals to penetrate into those. It's just a physical characteristic of radio systems. The current system has much larger valleys. We're hoping for a lot of improvement with this one, but there still may be some places in the county that we don't have perfect signal coverage.
So are you going to have all the police departments, like Rantoul and the county sheriff's department included?
The county sheriff's department is a MetCad partner at this time. All of the agencies, and there are 33 public safety agencies that are MetCad agencies now, they do not currently include the Village of Rantoul Police or Fire Department, and there are a couple of other rural fire protection districts that are not served by MetCad at this time. We'll be talking with those agencies to find out if they would like to use the new radio system, and we'll work with them to make that possible after it's up and running, but that's a discussion for the future.
Thank you.
I wanted to add to that, that the coverage maps we showed are 95 percent coverage. That's the profile those were drawn to. That just means that the coverage in the white areas might be 94, it might be 90, it might be 85. It's just something less than 95. It doesn't mean there's no signal in those areas.
Okay, thank you.
Danielle, questions?
Yes, how much are the, what's the cost projection for new radios for our police department?
I thought someone might ask that.
Seems like the obvious question.
If you take, yes, it is. For your jurisdiction, for Urbana Police Department, the public safety portable radios that we are recommending for user agencies with this system, under the current state bid pricing structure, and these are 2005 bid numbers, $2,217 per radio. Urbana Police have indicated that they will need 60 portable radios, so we did the math, that's $133,020 for 60 of those portable radios, assuming that at the time they're ordered, that is the bid pricing. The trend is, this kind of equipment goes down in price over time, and as the systems are more widely used, we would expect that price to be a little lower than that, but that's what it is right now.
Other questions from Robert, and then Dennis? Other questions from Robert and then Dennis.
I had one quick one. These upgrades, as they relate to the general public, how does it enhance their service?
The principal way that it enhances their service is it guarantees that communication between the dispatch center and the units in the field that are being sent to deliver service is of a more dependable nature, and also that the units in the field can communicate with each other more reliably. To eliminate confusion, overlapping, more units going to a call than need to go to a call, those kinds of problems come up when you have poor radio communications. The police, fire, and emergency medical systems really depend on this radio network as the backbone of their operations in the field. It's how we tell them where they need to go to provide service, and it also is an important link between themselves as they're delivering service out there, in a nutshell.
I'm curious about apartment buildings, for example, when they dial 911. Does it help you get directly to the apartment?
It does, in conjunction with our other systems. We use a very advanced computer system as an aid to the dispatchers. They enter the location that's given by the caller and verify that through the 911 system records to verify that that is, in fact, the address the call is coming from. So once we have a precise location for the nature of the call or whatever the problem is, that information is translated to the responding agencies with the radio system, and we vector those resources to the calls in the most efficient way, by the use of both of those networks.
Thank you. Dennis, your questions?
You said that 33 public agencies are members of MetCAD or would use MetCAD. How many of those agencies have you discussed this with so far, and how many are interested in it? In other words, they would each voluntarily have to join or be interested in this to form a seamless and a really useful umbrella?
Yeah, it's a very good question, thank you. All of our member agencies are on board with and supportive of these solutions for the new radio systems. When I talked briefly about the composition of the MetCAD Radio Advisory Committee, I mentioned that all of those jurisdictions were represented in the committee that actually explored these questions and came up with the solutions. We did that to make sure that there was consistent involvement and a buy-in to the solutions that were developed. So the agencies themselves were really the source of this information.
That's helpful, thank you.
Lynn?
What's the depreciation schedule for the radios? Are they five years, 10 years?
Depends on the components of the system. The field equipment, the portable radios that the officers and the firefighters use, the design life for that equipment is five to seven years. Kind of depends, those pieces of equipment get used in harsh environments, and they're subject to the school of hard knocks out in the field, so they tend to wear out pretty fast. The system infrastructure components, the base station radios and the repeater sites and those kinds of things are designed to last for 15 years. Again, it's a little bit longer design life than the old system we designed to operate for, and the nature of the equipment is such that you're never sure exactly how long the equipment's going to last, but 15 years is what we're projecting for the lifetime of this radio system.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council members? I have one very briefly. I just wonder, you mentioned that after a number of budget years, some discussion about the funding for MetCAD would need to happen. Is that because of the particular cost of operating the radio system or just because of staff and healthcare and other sorts of costs?
Thanks for pointing that out. No, it's not directly the result of the radio system. It's the overall cost of operation that will rise slightly with inflation over time, and coupled with what we are seeing today in a decline, a gradual decline, in revenues from telephone surcharge sources. And again, about half of the costs of MetCAD are borne by the telephone surcharge revenue that comes in, and the other half is by user agency fees. We're seeing a slight decline, about 7% a year, in the telephone surcharge revenue. That's due to a number of factors. Our biggest source of telephone surcharge revenue is wireline telephones. Well, if you look at what's happened in communication technology and usage over the last decade, cell phones, people using other forms of connectivity to get high-speed access to the internet, those sorts of things have resulted in a declining number of wireline accounts in Champaign County. So our revenue's been dropping off from that source pretty steadily. We're not sure if it's going to stabilize or keep going down, but if it keeps going down, we're probably going to need to take a look at that situation.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from committee members this evening? Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Kamler, Mr. Abish?
A Mr.
Yes, Bruce?
Just wanted to point out one item, so some sticker shock about the radio cost. We have been setting aside money for the replacement of radios, as you know, our system vehicle replacement fund. We do set aside money, though there will be a marginal cost increase for this, but substantial portion of those funds have been set aside in anticipation of this replacement. I think we might be setting the money aside on a seven-year basis. Some of our radios are probably 10 or more. With regard to Public Works, we've been postponing any radio acquisitions in Public Works until we can, not so suitable for them to.
Your mic is almost fixed.
I have a question.
Yes, Mayor, another question?
On the cell phones, are you saying that there's no 911 charge for cell phones?
No, there is a surcharge on cellphone accounts. It's assessed by the state at a standard level throughout the state, and it's assessed at a level that generates about one-third of the income per account per cellphone for Champaign County compared to wireline. The wireline surcharge is $1.50 a month, the state's surcharge is 75 cents a month. We receive about 47 cents per account per month of the cellphone surcharge. So it's a small piece of our revenue.
So you get 47 cents instead of how much?
Instead of $1.50.
Instead of $1.50, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next this evening, we have a resolution. This is Resolution 2005-10-018R. It is an item from our City Comptroller, a resolution deeming certain funds in the Special Tax Allocation Fund for the downtown Urbana Tax Increment Redevelopment Project Area as surplus funds and directing the payment and distribution thereof. This is for TIF District Number One. And Ron Eldridge, our City Comptroller, has an updated bit of information for us, and we'll hear from Bruce about this issue. Bruce?
Okay, let me start off by saying that each of you should receive your corrected distribution. The gross number at the first paragraph is correct, and your resolutions are correct. This is just a math error in the first version. This relates to payments to certain, to all of the overlapping taxing districts that are in TIF One. In 2004, we agreed to extend TIF One. We have an agreement with Park District and School District on how that will be done in terms of the finances. We have agreed to make a distribution. Last year, we distributed 196,660. This figure is 3.5% growth on that, and that will be distributed to the taxing districts in the amounts that are shown on the corrected version. Again, this was something we negotiated with the other taxing districts.
Are there any committee member questions? Yes, Charlie.
Yeah, just real quickly, so conceivably, an agency, one of these agencies can basically count on this kind of revenue per year hereout till the TIF ends?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, a motion to send this to council for recommendation would be in order.
So moved.
Second?
By Charlie and seconded by Lynn. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Next this evening, we have Resolution 2005-10-019R, official intent resolution with respect to supportive living facility to be developed by Prairie Winds of Urbana LLC. And on this topic, Bruce, again, will take it away.
I'll stall for a little bit.
Okay.
This is a request by Paul Tatman and his group to approve a supportive living facility in southeast Urbana. This request is targeted to the financing of this facility and not the facility itself. You might recall, and there's substantial information attached to this packet, that the City Council did approve an annexation agreement and special use permit for the Prairie Winds subdivision, which did include the proposed supportive living facility. There's a description of the proposed facility attached, but I assume maybe Paul Tatman might want to go into a little further detail on that, so I won't dwell on that. Let me talk just a minute about the financing. This is a private activity bond, and there's a description in the memo that explains what that is, but it's a form of tax-exempt municipal bond is generally what it is. Under the IRS code, an eligible project may qualify for these, and when that occurs, the city may act in name only to provide conduit financing for this facility. It's rather unusual, but we have done it from time to time. The most recent one that we undertook, although slightly different because they were taxed, 501(c)(3) was Clark Lindsey Village, which was last year, I believe we did the inducement resolution. This proposal, or what you have tonight, the resolution, does not actually issue any bonds. What it does is, under the code, it allows, once this resolution is approved, that the out-of-pocket expenses by the developer related to the development can be reimbursed from the issuance, once it's undertaken at a later time. There are many i's to dot and t's to cross in such a financing arrangement, but this is the first step typically in inducement resolution. Ken Beth of Evans &amp; Froelich represents the city in such matters and has reviewed this document, made changes to it. He represents the city and protects us to make sure that our primary objective is met, which is that there's no financial guarantee from the city of Urbana or any financial responsibility of the city of Urbana, and that only the revenues from the project are pledged and looked towards by the investors for repayment of the bonds. And that has been accomplished, so I would recommend the approval of the resolution. Again, this is not the issuance of bonds, that comes at a later time, this is the inducement resolution. So there are things yet to be done. With that recommendation, maybe you would like to further explain the project?
Yes, yes, Mr. Paul Tatman, Urbana's own.
I'm going to sing and Mark is going to dance. As Bruce said, a couple of years ago, when we plotted the Prairie Winds subdivision, we had got this approved, and we've been a little over two years now of getting the state approval. These assisted living centers are just what it says, assisted living, it's to keep the seniors at some kind of a dignified lifestyle, much later in years. Especially those that have no place else to go with a family, it's not here, or no family, or wind up in a nursing home. The state government statute says that 20% of the people in nursing homes can actually live in an assisted living center. Assisted living center basically is an apartment complex for seniors, that they level the service of whatever they need to live and maintain a decent lifestyle. What I'd like to do is, we've done one of these in Decatur and one in Danville, I'd like to give you a quick tour of the facility. Can we answer any questions? Mark, we'll speak right after this. You know how to use that thing. Please go up, down?
I don't know yet, but it's not so bad.
There it is.
That's it. This is actually the Danville facility. Can you tune that up a little bit?
Dialer in.
It's a very, very attractive, homey-looking place. I hope some of these lights show up, I was expecting a little better.
The show up better.
Are they? This is just, I think we're too far up to want to close up. This is just the view from the veranda area down the steps into the front lobby area as you come into the facility. This is the living room area or the main lounge area in the front. If desired, now, these apartments are completely self-contained, the kitchen's a whole bit in them, but again, whatever level of service they need. Now, this is a dining facility where they can eat three meals a day, whatever they want, and it's actually more like a restaurant type, where you can actually get some choices on the menu to order from. This is the kitchen area. This is like a well-staffed, equipped, restaurant-type kitchen. They have several side rooms. This room is just kind of a, it's a boardroom, it's a meeting room if they've got family members over it and they just want a place outside the apartment. This one is a, what they call an activity room, seats 30, 40 people. Different facilities do different things in there. The Danville facility does, they have this chili cook-off every, not chili and beer, just chili. Every week, they have a chili deal, they play cards, they've got several different activities going in there all the time. They're equipped with gymnasiums and workout equipment. This is just a shop down the corridor. Kind of a hotel, a little bit of a hotel concept. This is actually an apartment as it was completed and not furnished yet. This is that partial, some of the furnishings, this might show up a little better. That's that same unit furnished now. Kitchen facilities. Bathroom's all handicap accessible. And the units come with either one or two bedrooms. That's a very quick tour of the facility. If you have any questions about that, I'll answer them, or, Mark, you want to go from here?
Thank you, yeah. Do council members have questions? Dennis?
I know how valuable these kinds of living units can be for senior citizens. My in-laws lived in one similar to that in California, and I appreciate your interest in creating one in our community, and I think it's very valuable. You showed the interior of the apartments, and they look very fine. Do they come furnished, or do the individuals have the option of furnishing from their homes when they move in?
Most of them supply their own furniture.
Okay.
Yes, Lynn?
Do you plan to go forward and get a license for assisted living, which is kind of the latest thing, so that people who have insurance for that type of thing will eventually be able to use their insurance?
Yeah, he answers the easy questions, I just do the hard ones.
Let me just parse some words here for a minute. I mean, you said a license for assisted living. This specific, in Illinois, there's about five different categories of this sort of thing. This is what's called a supportive living facility, which has a special meaning in Illinois law, which is actually a pretty exciting dimension to it. The level of approval from the state is called a certification. I was on the phone about 45 minutes ago with my aunt, who's been a widow for 25 years. She's moving into the similar facility to this in Manteno, and her policy from, her nursing home policy will be paying for a portion of this.
So yours would be similar to this one that you were talking, your aunt lives in?
Almost identical in terms of, it's a supportive living facility in the same management company as we're talking about here.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council members, for Mr. Tatman or for Bruce? Dennis?
Yeah, and then I believe that you mentioned something about, or maybe you didn't mention just now, but as far as like medical assistance, when an individual in the unit is having medical difficulties, is there a nurse or some other medical person who will be on your staff to assist in some of these?
These are staff 24 hours a day. We don't actually have a doctor on staff, we have people to assist in their medications. We're not running a medical facility, but we do have medical assistants on hand.
So you don't have a registered nurse or any of those official-level employees, but you have people who are care providers in some other way?
And this is an area where the state really wants people to be careful about who's dispensing medications. So most of the employees are called certified nurse assistants. And then, but there is a registered nurse on the staff who reviews people's medication plan and helps set up so that the other non-registered staff can do that correctly. So under the law... So, under the law, you can hand someone their medication, but you can't put it in their mouth unless you're certified, unless you're a registered nurse. So, it's that level of, this is a specific topic, but there's wellness programs that are going on a couple of times a week. Likely, there'll be a physical therapy company that will rent space in, or rent space so that they can show up two or three times a week in the workout room. And so, people who need physical therapy, that's, you know, one of their options. They can use other options as well. But the idea is to bring a lot of the services to people. So, it includes, there's an intake assessment of what's people's health condition, what medications they're on. There's a couple of times a week, health programs, then the, and there's daily checks on people to see how they're doing, as well as the physical therapy component I just mentioned.
And you also indicated there was going to be a beauty salon and also some kind of bus service to and from?
The facility, we have a transportation to transport them, shopping, to their medical appointments, and so on. I guess there is a beauty shop, a salon, what do they call them nowadays?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Danielle?
I have a motion, which is to move this to council with the recommendation for approval.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Danielle and a second by Charlie. Are there any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, would all those in favor please say aye? Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Thanks, Paul, Mark. Next tonight, we have ordinance number 2005-09-139. This is an item from Public Works, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental supplemental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation regarding the installation of fold-down stop signs. And we have Jim Kelly, the operations manager, here this evening, and Bill Gray from Public Works. Yeah, Charlie, before we begin?
Brendan, can we, while Bill is up here, can we just do eight, nine, 10, 11, one after the other, just real quickly? Because they're all very simple, I think.
You'd like to take them omnibus and make a motion to the chair?
Yeah, Bill, just go right through them all.
Are there any council members opposed, or that want to discuss individual items? Okay, yes, feel free, when the time comes, to make a motion omnibus fashion. Mr. Gray?
Well, the first item I wanted to introduce Jim Kelly, Mr. Jim Kelly, our operations manager. Some of you, or most of you have met him, and I thought I'd ask him to speak to the first matter here.
Well, I feel kind of inadequate. I don't have PowerPoint or a virtual tour.
Can you speak into the microphone?
See, I'm not technically oriented here.
You don't need PowerPoint, just speak into the mic. You'll be okay.
What you have in front of you is an agreement with the state of Illinois that we'd like to enter into. It allows us to put fold-down stop signs on traffic signals that are malfunctioning, either that from power outage or just a simple malfunction. This allows for a safer intersection, creates a four-way stop. We currently have it on the city traffic signals now. We'd just like to increase that to the state signals.
Any questions from council members about that item? Okay, if there are none, Mr. Gray, you could go on and possess on these other three issues.
The next item has to do with appropriation of motor fuel tax dollars for a concrete patching project, which would include streets of Florida Avenue, Race Street, Windsor Road, and Water Street. There's a map in the packet that gives the approximate locations. This is something that council has to do, is approve such a resolution prior to us advertising for contractors to bid on such a project. And this is a very large project for us this year, and we think some of the work would start still this fall, but the majority of it would probably finish up, you know, as weather permits, next spring.
Okay, any council questions on that item?
I can't wait for Race Street to be done.
Yeah, me neither. Aye, aye.
It's a bicycling nightmare.
You can't go on the path, and you can't go on the street.
Mr. Gray, traffic commission items?
Yes, these are a couple of items on recent traffic commission agendas. The first are streets where the streets and new home construction have been completed north of Michigan, and those streets are, the width allows for parking on one side of the street and not on the other. So, this would mirror the ordinance that took place a year or two ago, south of Michigan, down to Florida Avenue. And item number 11, then, is for a stop sign at the newly opened, newly completed Colorado Avenue, where it intersects with the Stone Creek Boulevard. It's, at this point, a T-intersection. In future years, it will probably become a two-way stop, as Colorado would extend further to the east. So, those are the four items we have.
Yes, questions?
I move items eight, nine, 10, and 11 to council for approval. It's ordinance number 2005-09-139, 2005-10-017R, 2005-09-144, and 2005-09-145.
Second.
Second, by Lynn, a motion by Charlie. Are there any other questions or any discussion about these four items? Yes, Danielle?
Just a quick question. I have my eye on Race Street because it's such a, because Meadowport Park, I believe, is the most intensively-used park in all of the county. I could be wrong, but I believe that's what I read in the Urbana Public, the Urbana Park District Information Packet. So, there's a lot of folks who bike to Meadowport Park, and they use Race Street to go there. There are also professional bikers who bike down Race Street to get to Windsor Road, where we have that nice bike path, on-street bike path, that unfortunately is truncated when you get to Champaign. But at least in Urbana, we have a bike path for a period of time. So, the question is, Race Street currently allows the parking on both sides of the street, and then there's two wide lanes in addition to that. So, is there, is there any plans? The patching's great, and it'll help in terms of bicycle activity in the area. Is there, is there any future plan to look at a bike path on Race Street where we could have bike lanes? Not bike path, I know we have the off-street bike path. That's great for children, that's great for folks who want to go slower and have to look out for pedestrians and walkers, et cetera. But is it possible that we could investigate bicycle lanes on Race Street? And actually, the parking on both sides is never used. It's always just one side where you see the parking used. So, we could preserve the parking and have two bike lanes, and also have the two, two, you know, cart lanes? Is that?
I think it's worthy of investigating, yes.
Any other questions on any of these four? Okay, would all those in favor of these four items, please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
While Bill's still here, there was a memorandum in our packets on the new landscape recycling center compost promotion, which I think is really good. I'd like to commend Bill and Mike Brunk for it. I have two questions on it. Are you going to be working with Champaign and the county to get out to them as well? And is there any thought of mailing these brochures to all the landscape companies in the area?
Mike could answer that best, but I believe the answer is yes. It is a promotional piece to give to any and all users, especially contractors, but even new home builders, developers, new home builders. We feel this is an untapped market that could use this product. So, that's, I know he wants to target those avenues.
Yeah, it just, it seemed like this was sort of Champaign, or Urbana-centric.
No, it's county-wide.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Public Works. Mr. Kelly, Mr. Gray?